Minutes of the meeting? Make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes from the 41624 meeting as prepared.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of five. 81P.
Yeah, this is the lot split.
From Highland Street, yeah.
Off Highland Street as part of the Gomes Way subdivision. It was the large outlot that was left in the subdivision, and they had gone to the ZBA to split it. That was approved. Copy of the decisions in your packet. And the plan was pretty legible at eight and a half by 11, so I didn't make a larger copy.
I have it up on the screen there.
Oh, yes. Oh, there it is. So it's endorseable as submitted.
Pleasure of the board.
Move approval.
Moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded for approval for the site, signature of the 81P. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of five.
You want to just sign it after the meeting?
Yeah, we can sign it after. Next, we have the amended site plan for 500 Fortune Boulevard. BEI.
Do you see things with the GLM engineer representing for fabrication? I'm not sure how this amended the site plan to restry for parking.
I can barely hear you. Speak up.
Certainly. So we've amended the site plan and added some additional parking. And I have, if you don't have a sketch in front of you, I have sketches I can pass out if that would be helpful.
Do you have them on the numbers?
Yeah, do you have half-size?
Are you looking for the, I'm sorry, the latest one? The one that's sent today?
The latest one. Yes. The latest one, I just added some things that the fire department had mentioned. So this is an existing building that was constructed.
Let me check.
Just going to take me a second. We're going to get to see your passwords. It's only my password for another seven days.
Not even now.
Sorry.
No pressure.
You have to call Homeland Security. Do you have half-size?
I do.
Prince, why don't you just?
Yeah, good.
Half bucks, then?
No, it's a different.
You can forge signatures, but you can't.
It's a different password than my computer because they got a.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So this is the existing building of 500. This is Fortune Boulevard. This is East Main Street. And what's in red is what we have restripped. So we did some restriping in this area here. They kept all those spaces at nine feet. We took out the handicap spaces that were on the opposite side of the main door, and we reconfigured them to be along the front entrance. Might be easier to point here. So we eliminated the handicap spaces across the way, moved them to the front. We're going to be adding a handicap accessible ramp in this area here and eliminating the existing front walk to put in a front walkway right directly to the front door. And then we've restripped these so that we have an extra space for all the spaces at nine, ninety-one. And then we've added a row of spaces in this area here. We've added 10 extra spaces. And then we've added some spaces. These were originally part of the approved design plan for the building. They put them in, and then at some point, they had eliminated them for coming in at the back of the building. Some of the additions that they made to the building have eliminated the need to get in and out. So we kept a 24-foot wide aisle and added those spaces back in. We had originally proposed to put a concrete pad in this area here. That's been eliminated from this proposal. We're putting a proposed concrete tank here with a, excuse me, a concrete enclosment area around a tank. And then we've added bollards at the request of the fire department. And then we also had a proposed shed in this area here. We've kept the aisle with 35 feet. The shed is predominantly on the existing pavement. And then we bollards across the front of that at the request of the fire department, except for the transport access door that goes in. And then we restripped the spaces that along the back. They were losing them over the years, and that they had just started to restriped them and hadn't really kept a consistent width. So they're all nine feet. So overall, we have added, I think, 37 spaces to what's out here. We did an analysis of pavement that was being removed. And there's parts of pavement here that go around the shed. There's a, I don't know if you see the red line here. Parts of the parking lot that we're eliminating, along with the old pavement that was behind here, so that we only added in what we could balance for pavement, so we're not increasing the curvier surface. And that's really all we're doing with this. Any questions?
Where are the chemicals stored?
So there's, that's an excellent question, but there's a containment area that we had come in and permitted, I think, two years ago. It's a little trail that's connected to the building. Then there are tanks around the area that are surrounded by containment areas. I think there's a tank in this area here. There's a tank here. And then other things are stored interior to the building. They work with the fire department and within their own requirements for the chemicals that they store to do it safely.
This is the only one being proposed as additional?
That's the only one that's proposed as additional.
For this site plan? The rest of them have already been approved by the.
Correct.
What's the storage in the shed out back? What's going to be in there?
There'll be containers, well, totes that they use to store things in that will be placed in there. Right now, some of them are stored outside, so they want to be able to place to put tools and things that they're, you know, they're trying to reorganize. So the shed itself is 50 by 30.
So are we to understand then there's nothing hazardous in the shed?
I believe what was going to be stored here, they call it HF, and I don't know what it stands for. But they're working, but they get their permits from whatever they need, for whomever they need to do whatever that is. I believe that is being stored in there instead of being outside. Instead of being outside on a slab, it would be stacked. There are containers that would be stacked. So they'd be stored inside part of that building. Again, they do it within a containment area.
So buildings in a containment area?
Anything that's in the building that needs to be is within the containment.
In the shed, right?
Yeah. But not, it's not entirely, not everything that's in there will be needing to be contained. It's, some of it's storage.
The HF, when it was outside, didn't have a containment area, so I wouldn't expect it needed one inside.
But they're going to have to meet the fire department.
Yeah, I was going to say the fire department.
The fire department, yeah.
So how many additional spaces? I'm sorry.
About 37.
About 37.
I confirm.
That's right.
You did. I just, I wrote it down, and I.
Good memory.
Questions from the board? It's a pleasure of the board.
Motion, we approve the amended site plan?
Second.
We moved and seconded. We approved the amended site plan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of five.
Thank you very much.
No worries.
Norfolk Parks Apartments, Spruce Street and Norfolk.
I can give it to you if you wanted to. It's interesting.
Yeah, Henry Sun. Beatle.
Yes.
I always liked him, but man, that stunned me.
I've been here once.
So move over so he can have.
I'm sure this is something we don't know.
I always liked.
Grab those.
Oh, geez, okay. Oh, those are all the pictures. So I want to open this to start. There we go. Start out with this, and then I'll open the plans. Okay, good evening. I'm Mike Moonin. I'm a landscape architect with CHJ Consulting, representing the town of Milford for the Town Park Improvement Project. So I'm sure you're all pretty familiar with the park. This is a town park. You know, it has Walnut Street to the north, Congress Street to the west, and Spruce Street to the south. Memorial Elementary School is to the east. And then you can pretty much see the current uses on the park. Let me go to our improvement plan. Which one's Town Park? Sorry. There is the revised. There we go. There we go. Okay, so. Great. That here. Trying to do the overall. Okay, so the big picture on the project is that, you know, we're not changing too much of the layout of the park, but we are reconstructing all the pathways on the park to just improve all the pathways. And then we're reconstructing the tennis courts in the same location, but two of them will be tennis courts, and one of the bays will be for pickleball courts. And then just to the south of that, we're replacing the existing tennis courts there with a double, with a court that has two basketball courts and a street hockey court. Then to the east of that would be a fitness center. And then up to the north, we're replacing the basketball area with a passive park picnic area with pathways, benches, and picnic tables. And then over to the east here, we are refurbishing the existing park building, which would include adding the storage, a storage area to the back. That's, that's the big picture. And then this is an enlargement of the northern area of the park. Oh, and I also didn't mention that we're adding new pedestrian lighting throughout the park. There's shown by these, this symbol right here. So those are spaced evenly throughout the pathways to light the pathways at the park. So then here, the tennis court, pickleball court facility, there's one tennis court here, one tennis court here, and then the four pickleball courts here with a gathering area, seating area in the center. And then these would also have sports lighting on the courts. The picnic area, this is the walkway. These are benches, a long walkway, and then some picnic tables on the interior. You know, should the town want to for certain events, they could add some portable picnic tables into this area. And this really complements the stage. Here's the stage area for performances. It just complements that area and allows this whole space to be used for, you know, spectators for the performances. And then the southern portion, this is the, you know, the combined basketball, street hockey court, similar to a facility that was just put in down in Franklin. And then this is the fitness area here, and there's an outdoor, this is a, just a large open space for fitness training and so forth. Could do outdoor yoga classes and things like that. And then you could see the improved pathways. Along the improved pathways, we're replacing benches with ADA access for those benches. And then some more benches along this pathway. And we're putting in a new flagpole right here. So that's, oh, and then we have, for viewing over the baseball field, we're creating an ADA viewing area at the top of the existing bleachers. And then we're proposing three shade shelters there for, you know, mainly for, you know, the protection from the sun. So that's the, that's the big picture. I could, I could go down. So then we have all the grading, drainage plans, lighting plan with the photometrics, and then planting plans. And then let me get down to the, all the construction details. Here's the building improvement plan. We are keeping the men's room here, the women's room here. We're adding a janitorial closet area here. And then this is a family restroom. We're relocating the doors to the front of the building and then putting in a water fountain bubbler at the, at the front of the building. Then this is the back area, and it's, it's basically just one-story open storage area to the back. So I think with that, I could address any questions or comments?
Ma'am?
Yeah?
I'm sorry, but in that, that's a hopeful description, but I wasn't on board when the original site plan was approved for these, for these improvements. And I guess I didn't catch what's different in this plan.
So we'll go back. So Mike wasn't here, but I can, I can answer to some of that.
Okay. Do you want the overall, or do you want?
Yeah, right here is good.
Okay.
The differences.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So one, so one thing that was brought up, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, was a concern for this walkway. So this walkway here was originally cut in further up towards the bandstand, and it was asked by the commission to make it so it was a little less invasive to the bandstand. They felt that the walkway where it was up here was sort of cutting off from, if people wanted to sit back here, they're sort of being cut off by a walkway.
Sir, when you say the commission, you mean Parks Commission?
No, I'm sorry, here. Yes, yes. Board, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted.
So in this walkway here, we made, you know, that adjustment to bring it closer to, this is the outfield fence of the softball field. Okay, that was one thing that was requested. I'm drawing a blank on the, oh, so those walkways, one, another thing that was requested by the board was to meet with the school, because there was some discussion about possible plan for the school to do something with their drop-off for Memorial School. And what we had proposed to them originally was using this driveway here to go up in some sort of direction. There was no set plan, but they would be able to use this walkway now to drop off the Memorial School and exit out on the Walnut side. So during that time, I did meet with the school, members of school, superintendent, principal of Memorial. Liz was there. Mike was there.
I was there.
And we discussed what their, what their thoughts were for future of what they would need. Larry, Larry presented a plan of some walkways to come through the middle here.
Drive, drive.
A driveway that come through here. When speaking with the school, the school was saying that that seemed a little extreme. They didn't think they needed that. They thought the existing walkways would be fine. So what we came up with is these walkways will be eight feet to help out with our trucks. This walkway coming from Evans Street that would go down to our building here would be 10 feet in width. The rest of the walkway that comes from our building, that comes out down near Stacy and that exits out behind Memorial, will be for a plan in the future for the school to decide what they want to do to, like, finish that. In the meantime, they could use that walkway for it. So that was, that was a couple of things that stuck out for me from the board. I don't know if it was, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
Yeah, if there was anything else that you guys.
And the basketball court.
And the basketball court, so.
Asked to work that out.
Right, so in, in that discussion, when we had town meeting, and they had voted for the original plan that we had presented at the town meeting, the moderator asked that the commission, the park commission and myself, would give an opportunity to the town meeting members that were against the basketball court moving.
Against the parking lot.
Right, against, I'm sorry, right, against the parking lot. So we were originally putting that as a parking lot. So in five months, four months' time, in meeting with these residents, they came to our meeting. We discussed that. The commission listened to what their concerns were, and this is the design. We decided, we decided to eliminate the parking lot completely and make it this picnic, yeah, passive, you know, area. So that was decided, and then we brought the preliminary plans here that you, I don't think you were here, but, yeah, the preliminary plans had that on it.
No, she was.
So the preliminary plans were presented, and then those, those changes were asked to be made, and that's what we did.
And, if I have a moment, I just, minor issue, I just don't see the bandstand.
Sorry. The bandstand's right here.
Just making sure.
There is, there is work being done to the bandstand to the front side. We are adding to the stage and adding a roof to that.
After this season's over?
Well, this season, we're going to be playing down in July. I mean, down at Plains Park.
Oh, I didn't know.
Yes. So that will be something that the, they'll announce. But we did that during, we did that during COVID. We did that during COVID, and it worked out really well. And Paul Sarapine, who runs the band concerts, thinks it, thought it was, you know, absolutely fine, and there's a lot of space down there, so.
They will come back to.
Yes.
So while the construction is going on. We're hoping to have the last band concert of the season at the newly.
If everything came together, that would be the plan.
So the only major change from the time this was presented at town meeting to now is that parking lot changing to the passive recreation area. That's really, oh, and putting the addition on, the storage addition on the building. Those are the only two major changes. A lot of the others are kind of minor finessing.
Is it some reason that the design of the picnic area is facing away from the bandstands instead of orienting it toward the bandstands? What area is already. Why would you create this new separate. Future that orients. Design-wise, that's just backwards. If you're going to do a loop of walkways and picnic areas, well, why not orient them toward the bandstand, which is where everybody's going to be looking?
So switch the benches to the other side of the path so that they're facing.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's not only.
Yeah, we could do that.
It's not only that the, that the route of the sidewalks has nothing to do with the overall area and the activities that you're trying to promote by keeping the bandstand and improving it, but yet, and you're adding to that with permanent benches that face the opposite direction. The design-wise.
It might make sense to do the other way.
Look into these two benches here.
Put them on the other side, yeah.
Yeah, I would look at the whole thing. I don't know, it's just somehow, it's design-wise, just the opposite of what it would appear you're trying to accomplish with the bandstand.
But they don't need to.
If the benches didn't have a backing to it.
Yeah.
Would that solve the problem?
That could be used either way.
I just, I think the whole, the whole design is.
I'm trying to solve problems, babe, that's what I do.
I'm just suggesting that the, the design, the layout, is backwards from how the bandstand in the park area is used. So if you're, if you're encouraging people to use it even more, why not focus it on the bandstand, so that when it fills up, everybody can use the entire space.
Right, so this, this isn't preliminary, this, I mean, this isn't all for the bandstand. This is for the park in general. This is going to give the people an option. Most of the bandstand people sit in this grass area, and that's why we moved the walkway to not cut into that grass area. This is 95% of the people that are coming to a band concert are sitting here. That's why that space is open. If these, if these benches were to be flat or without backs or to, you know, face the other way, I think that's a minor, a minor thing that we can, you know, do.
And the main purpose of those paths are to get people over from Walnut Street, that the crosswalk, across Walnut Street, over to the courts. And then people from the school over to, over to the court area or over to the bandstand area, they weren't really, like, specific to the bandstand area. And it was kind of, you know, the, the design intent was just to, like, have an oval in there, so there's a picnic area, open lawn area in the middle. And adding, just adding another element to the park.
So a lot of our, you know, discussions with Mike, but also his discussions with the commission, my discussion with commissions, was what this park is being used for now as opposed to what we want it to be used for, but also making it an approved area for the events that we have there now, but with the addition of additional things that we, you know, additional, with the street hockey, with the two basketball courts, with the pickleball. So that's, I think, why, you know, we settled on that area for the bandstand because of that grassy area. And that's what I was trying to explain with the spacing.
Anyone else, Joe?
Well, just a point of comment. If, if the school ever decides to change that, that walkway actually has to be much, my understanding is that walkway will have to be much wider. I believe that has to also be, that has to be a walking area besides a drive area for the school. The distance from the school to locations, whether they know it or not, is actually measured along that walking area. So you have students that, that are considered walkers because they walk along that path. So if that ever happens. Yes.
So that, it was, it was a point of discussion, in particular, from Stacy standpoint. And the timing of it is that the walking students from the Stacy School are gone before the, so, and then we got into a whole discussion about how early the parents start lining up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, again, that, that's, that's something that's going to need to be. be considered. I don't want to get into that because I don't think I'm going to be making judgments on to whether somebody's walking or not through there and whether it's safe or not if they're not on a sidewalk, but that's, that's a discussion for a different day.
The schools, the school resource officer, I don't remember which one, but was at the meeting, and like I said, it was, it was a point of discussion.
That was Paul Pinto.
So, and, and not, again, not, it, it's.
Yeah, so we did include, in that meeting, we did include the police so to make sure that, you know, that's.
Well, they, they may be happy, I'm not happy, so let's put it that way. At the end of the day, it doesn't really matter what they say, but that, that's not what's up here, and that's still a walkway now, so it's not an issue now, but if it ever does happen, it's going to need to be a separate sidewalk. I mean, I, you know, I said this before, I, I, this isn't an area I still would rather see the basketball court, but I also said at, at the meeting, it's the park commissioner's choice as to what they end up doing. They get to submit the plan that they want, but I, I just, I, I don't see this area as a picnic area and, and as opposed to having that basketball court there. I just think that's a better solution for the town of Milford, and I'll continue to say that, but that's not my, you know, again, I don't tell people what they put into a building or not when they submit site plan, so that's just my, my opinion. Other than that, I mean, everything else is the same. I don't, I don't really have any other comments on it.
Chris?
Yes, I guess, Joe, to your point, you know, the walkway. I know that you say, I say you had a meeting with, with schools. It wasn't a posted meeting, school committee wasn't involved, so I take, there was, you know, I take exception to that, right? We've got to make sure that if we're going to do something that's going to benefit the school, that we involve school committee. That's just how school committee works, right? So there was, I know there was one representative from school committee who was there. I was chairman at the time, I was not informed of the meeting, so I always guess, a little taken back by that. I know that we want to propose this walkway slash roadway. My concern is, is it being designed as a walkway or is it being designed as a roadway? Because I look at a roadway much differently than a walkway. It's going to be carrying hundreds of cars per day. It's 10 feet wide, you know, so, yeah, so I just want to make sure. Is it a walkway or is it a roadway first, I guess, I'll ask that.
Your frustration with not being invited to this meeting or get together, is that with us or is that with the school committee?
I was chairman of the school committee, so there was no invitation.
So that would be Mr. McIntyre then?
No, Mr. McIntyre runs the school in a day to day, so let's not get into that.
Well, no, I'm the one that sent out the invite.
On anybody's toes, and I don't want, I don't want you to feel as though you were overlooked because that's not the intention from this board.
I know it wasn't, but there are implications to the school's budget if we keep going down this road, so that's why. And the school's budget is run by the school committee, not the administration team.
All right, so just a, just a point on that. So I, I sent the invitation, I sent a request to Kevin McIntyre, Craig Kinsigley, and Lisa Burns to speak about this. Kevin McIntyre got back to me, and he told me who was coming to the meeting. I didn't, I, I just asked for a meeting. He invited the police, he invited, you know, so.
Yeah, and, and I understand, but this is, this is not, this is not a school.
Right.
The wide, the only difference here, the only difference as a result of that meeting is that, that walkway from Walnut Street to the.
Walkway or roadway?
So it's, it's, it's a walk, it's a, it's a 10-foot wide walkway.
Right, yeah.
And that's, that is, that is the only difference that they are proposing as part of the town park project.
Right.
No implications to the school in any way because it's not, we're not changing anything about the, no decision was made.
My next concern then, if it is a 10-foot wide walkway, I don't see anything to prevent vehicles from coming onto that area, so it's going to look like a roadway.
Yeah, there, we discussed a chain at the meeting across there. I don't, if it's not shown, there should definitely be a chain, yes.
Part of the reason it's 10-foot wide is so that they can get maintenance vehicles.
Yeah, that's the other reason.
I understand. It's 10-foot wide, so it looks like a road.
It should, it should definitely have a chain.
Yep, and so the, the thing that we prom, we told the schools at that meeting was that we would, because we're building this now and we don't want to take it up again, we would design it 10 feet wide so that if they choose to use it as a drive through, through there for pickup and drop off, they, they would be able to. So that's all we're getting ready for.
So it'll be to sustain car traffic?
Yes, but it, we know it's on them to present it and go through the proper process, processes to be able to use that for a pickup and drop off. They have some other future things they need to do down at the other end to make that feasible, and they'll have a proposal for that effort under separate, under a separate process when they're ready to do that.
Yeah, at the end of the day.
The other thing is, one more thing, the other thing we're doing is we're making that drive wide enough so that Jim and Parks Maintenance can get their vehicles in there to drive down that drive, which the other end of that drive is already 10 feet wide going over to the maintenance building, going over to the maintenance storage, which they already do drive in there to get over there, but they're driving partially on the grass because the, the walkway.
What, what were asked?
So, okay, sir.
Thank you. So can we do two things? Can we put on the plan on that roadway along the length, no vehicles allowed, or walking only, or something to that effect?
Unauthorized, yeah. It would be unauthorized, we want to check.
Unauthorized.
We just talked about putting, we just talked about putting a ballade in or a subfence to stop, to stop vehicles, so I, I'm not worried, I mean, it's the same thing that we do with the bike.
Well, it has to be added to the plan.
We have to put ball, yeah, we'll have to indicate putting ballades. Signs mean nothing. People don't.
No, I wanted it on the plan so that the, in the future, if the school department wants it to be a driveway, it, it demands an amendment to the site plan.
If the school.
If the plan says no vehicles allowed.
Well, the school would have to.
Then there are no vehicles allowed until the plan is amended.
The school would be coming back with a separate amendment to the site plan for whatever they're going to do.
Right, but if that doesn't say.
If they're making changes to this.
Excuse me, if that doesn't say no vehicles allowed, I'm not so sure you need to amend that site plan to allow vehicles.
Yeah, you do.
Yes, because there's no.
Because we're not, we're not approving a school plan nor a drive plan on that.
So all we did is, so our walkways, our, all our walkways are eight feet for the width of our trucks. When we met with the school, we had said we would expand this to 10 to equal this and the rest of the roadway. That's when we went to 10. Otherwise, it would be eight. If you don't want this 10, we'll leave it at eight, but it's just if they go, we'll, we'll go to eight.
This board asked.
To make that wider.
Them to meet for, for, this board asked for the Parks to Parks, whatever, to meet with the school to make sure that the two align with each other, so that we weren't taking up doing something and then undoing it later.
We, we, yes, but the wording of that is totally, we asked to not, at least I asked when I was sitting over there, not to preclude the possibility of the school doing it. I don't, to, to be honest, what you just said, Jimmy, is exactly what I would just assume to do is make it eight feet. I don't want to preclude the school from doing it because I don't think that's going to look anything like what the school's going to need to put in if they ever decide to use that as a drive thing. There's going to have to be other things to do, so.
Go back to the original eight feet and leave it at that.
And leave it at that, and then the school, because you haven't precluded them, they can come in and add two feet, add four feet if that's what they need to do at the end. You didn't preclude them, and that's what I wanted to see is not preclude them. If that fit their requirement as to where it needed to be, then that's great, and, and you know, maybe at the end of the day, so they don't have to dig it all up, we do that with a loading such that it's a roadway loading for the eight feet that's there, which you're probably already doing anyways because you're using it. But, but that's, that to me is what we had said to do, is yes, you met with them, you're now not, we have some confidence that you're not precluding it, and they can go back whenever they decide exactly what they want to look at it, because we know they don't know exactly what they need now.
And that's fine, that's fine, yeah. And it will have, it will have weight bearing, it will be made for weight bearing.
Because, yeah, I mean.
We just did Plains Park the same way.
If you look at the detail sheet, the detail sheet calls for the same, same thing that the town puts on their roads, so.
Right, and that's why I just wanted to make sure, because again, it's going to, I'm, I'm less worried about the slow traffic, but more worried about the winter time if you're going to take, you know, your heavy equipment on there, sanding, insulting, right? That's, those vehicles are far heavier than the standard passenger car that's going to.
And that's the improvements like we just did at Plains, we have to do the same.
Right, and I just.
I don't have issues with that. I mean, my, my thought is, is looking, you know, looking forward. I mean, what, you know, and again, it might not be anything to do with me, I might not have any input. It's, you know, what's the plan for 20, 30 years for the park? I mean, it looks like we're just planning for today, you know, and that's where my problem is. I don't see enough facilities, I don't see enough basketball. If, if the basketball is going to have hockey, I mean, what if everybody's playing hockey that day?
It's all done by permitting. That would be my responsibility for permitting. That's what I do now for the, for the tournaments and stuff we have. So one of the, one of the discussions we had had, and I mentioned it last meeting, I think, was the amount of summer groups we have now. We have a summer, a couple of summer leagues, but we have also other groups that are looking to use the courts. We're actually using the Heights Courts, which haven't been used for any type of league play, and we're using that this summer. One reason is these courts won't be available, but it was great to see someone ask, hey, could we use this court? Absolutely. And I give them the permit and they use it for those hours that they need it. So having the two courts side by side, that's going to help with the leagues to run smoother, but we'll also be allowed to, you know, have them all use this court if they want.
Just thinking about leagues, I mean, every time I drive up Walnut Street, which is every day, I mean, I see kids having to pick up basketball.
Right, right.
Are they going to have to ask for permit to do that?
No, so, so the courts, how they're set up, it's going to be just the same way. The only thing where it's going to come for permitting is community use. Wants to run a street hockey program from 10 to 12 o'clock. I'm going to give them a permit for those hours, 10 a.m. to 12 on a Saturday morning, and they'll have the permit for it. If someone should come to play, they might, they can ask, hey, you know, when's this over? 12 o'clock, okay, we'll come back, and then they'll be able to use it. Same thing with the basketball for any other community use. So we'll, we use the community use, we, we give them a lot of permits for their different programs and stuff throughout the schools, which they, you know, basically have jurisdiction on those, but I help out the permits because I have all the youth groups that I have to oversee to make sure no one's showing up at the same field to use that. So that's all part of it, you know, for here. The pickleball, we had discussed the noise issue that was brought up at town meeting, that will have signage that on, on the weekends, you're not starting at a certain time. There's not going to be someone playing pickleball at 6:00 in the morning. You know, we're going to put a sign up that's going to stop that, and then the police are going to have to monitor it. If there's a complaint, they'll have to go up and tell these people. But that, that was the discussion we had at town meeting to sort of say, hey, a lot of the noise issues with the pickleball, I know that wasn't a discussion you guys had, but just to let anyone know that is speaking, I mean, is listening tonight, the pickleball you see on, on newscasts and stuff that, oh, it's so loud. There's 12, 16, 30 courts in these, in some of these facilities, that's loud. Four courts, you're not even going to hear it over the traffic on Congress Street, you know, so, I mean, that's just a little side note, just so if people are wondering.
Have you thought of limiting that to two and maybe put in a volleyball court or something else? You know, just have the diversity?
Yeah, we haven't really talked about the volleyball. We have, we did add the volleyball court down at Plains that we're improving on, so if anyone asks for the volleyball, I, I send them either to Plains, and we have one group that uses Tomaso now.
And pickleball tends to play in groups, so four courts, like a minimum of four courts is usually a preferred amount of courts, just because it's a very social event, and you have 12, 16 people show up at one time and they hang out and they have a little picnic, and then they play pickleball, and it's pretty. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I'm trying to bring people back in, you know, and that was a lot with the commission that we had talked about, bringing the people back into Town Park. Town Park's like a lost gem as far as I'm concerned. You know, growing up, that's where we all played, and growing up, not for nothing, for most of us here, that was the same courts and stuff that were there, you know, besides the fixing over the years, but, you know, that was why a big part with the commission was to keep that same, that same layout, because it's been there like that for so long.
And got other things on the agenda.
Yeah.
And Jamie's waiting.
The, should be a little discrepancy here. We talked about the path going across the grass where it wasn't to move it closer to do it, it was to eliminate it. There's no need for that much asphalt to be put down on this, on this nice grass area that's beautiful, we're going to make it an asphalt jungle. We, we make them put landscaping in parking lots, we took away part of the width of the streets to get away with impervious material, we eliminated the sidewalks on the subdivisions, and now we're taking a beautiful grassed area and putting asphalt all over it, and there's no way that I am going to vote yes on having that there. The idea of having the picnic tables there is fine, but they can be put along. One of, one of the areas should be put along where the playground is, down on Spruce and Congress, where the parents could sit there and enjoy the picnic table with their, watching their kids. There could be a couple that come on right off of the walking paths in a number of places that you could put the semicircles there with a handicap accessible right off the walking path, and there'd be no problem. There's no need of putting that much asphalt on that grassy area, none whatsoever.
So where, where we're putting the pathway are the desire lines for people coming, we have a crosswalk over there on Walnut Street. People are going to want to cross there and walk over to the pickleball courts. They're going to walk on the grass anyway. And then people coming from the school.
Would that be a consideration?
Are going over to, from the school over to the courts, the pickleball courts. You know, if we didn't have those pathways in there, those people would have to go all the way down to the base of the softball field.
No, they're going to walk across, they're going to walk across the field.
That doesn't make it compliant.
Then you're, then you're not making it a D.
It's compliant because where, where the handicap parking spaces are on Congress Street, where the handicap spaces are at the Memorial School, where the handicap spaces are at Stacy School is very compliant, they can come up those paths. I was there today with my scooter going up and down those paths with no problem, nice and easy, and it's very, very convenient.
You weren't speeding, were you?
No, I wasn't.
That was on TV, it's a low-speed chase.
I was taking pictures here with, and, like I say, there's no need of putting that thing as.
Right, and so that's why I was proposing, and this would be the commission, obviously, but we, we did discuss somewhat this originally, and taking this out creates this whole grass area that you're talking about. These benches could be relocated in areas near the ball field, areas near the playground as you spoke of, but keeping this walkway here, which would be far less than what the basketball court was, taking this section out, okay, already, so, and then we just took out another two feet on this walkway of asphalt because we've made that only eight feet now. But if we would have do that, babe.
No.
Where the walkway would still be connected. All right, well, that's, yeah, that's fine.
I'm not speaking for the board.
That's fine.
I'm speaking for me.
But it is less pavement.
Right, it would be less pavement.
There's no need of putting any pavement there whatsoever. And I don't, I don't see any need for it whatsoever.
But yet you'd be in favor of keeping the basketball court that's fully paved, I guess, I don't know.
The basketball court is there.
Could save some money?
The basketball court's there. I, I, I'm not fighting.
I guess I don't, I don't understand the logic, but that's okay.
I'm not fighting over the basketball court, I'm, I'm fighting against taking a beautiful green area that I've walked over many times.
Well, that's why I'm fixing it, that's why, that's what I'm, that's what I'm proposing.
Green area, it's a basketball court.
No, no.
Based on the plan.
The outfield, just beyond the fence.
Right, so that's why, that's why I was proposing taking that middle section out, so we don't have a loop going through. All it's going to be is this walk, so this could even be more straight, or be here to here. This would still be in existence to allow this to go to Memorial, but eliminate from here to here.
You don't like the grass, you don't.
This will all be grass, this will all be grass. This will all be grass. I'm just saying, that's an option that we could look at.
I'm just saying, I don't see any need for it whatsoever, and I'm not in favor of that's.
Understood.
So you're not in favor of the full project or just that walkway?
No, just that, just that part, I love the project. I mean, there's probably another 100, there's probably another 180 ton of asphalt that you're putting down there.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm trying to eliminate it, but.
Yeah, me too.
Well, no, I'm trying to eliminate a portion of it to.
Trying to meet you halfway, babe.
Sort of be a compromise here.
I understand.
Is there?
Respectfully, we disagree.
Speaking about handicaps, is there, is there handicap, is there a handicap sign? I think there is on Congress Street?
Yes.
'Cause I mean, that's where, that, that's the handicap access for any of this. I mean, they're not coming from Walnut Street and going to...
But we still have to make the benches accessible in the park.
Well, no, no, I understand the benches, but I'm just saying, in terms of them going to the tennis courts or the, or the pickleball courts, the access is, is gonna be from Congress Street.
Yeah, and keep in mind, ADA is not just from handicap, like parking spaces access to, it's from...
No, I know the whole thing has to, I know the whole thing has to be if we put it in, but, but the fact is, if I eliminate that, you know, 'cause we were talking about, oh, how they're gonna get here, they're not getting there that way to begin with. You could eliminate it and not have to worry about it. I'm not saying you do and you don't, but I...
I figured, when, again, I looked at it, where the handicap parking spaces are, it's very, people can get to wherever they're going in this, in the site, and there's no need for that. That's, again, that's my, uh, my opinion, but I'm very steadfast on it.
My question would be, our next meeting is the 21st, would you have time to update the plan and come back and try to address all the comments you heard tonight by, by the 21st?
I, I think we need to, well, Jamie probably has a comment. I think we need to make sure we give them direction. I mean, as Babe said, that's, that's Babe's direction, we, we need to make sure they, they have direction going back, as to what we talked about.
That's my opinion. Mr. Wheelock, you wanted to say something?
Hi there, Jamie Wheelock from Conifavin. I'm so happy to see the Planning Board taking such an active interest in preserving aspects of Town Park that deserve preserving. I am, in general, a supporter of the renovation plans. All things need regular updating, so I'm not saying this is a terrible idea, though I have a lot of issues with the public input that's been allowed up to this point. Today is the first day I've heard of the stage being expanded on the amphitheater, and it's the first time I've heard of a storage space that sounds like 300 and something square feet underneath, below the bathroom facilities. That storage space underneath the, not underneath, but below, maybe it's underneath, I don't know, but the expansion of the bathroom facility on the lower level is a improvised solution for a problem that the Parks Department is well aware of, which is, they are desperate for a new home and need space, and it seems like building a less than 400 square foot closet on the lower end of this bathroom building is, yeah, sure, it'll help, but in the, the ultimate solution is for the Parks Department to develop their own space needs in a different location besides building inside of the park and adding onto that thing. Also, the, I guess it's great if the bandstand gets improved. All I understood was that the roof portion was gonna cover the stage portion more, I didn't realize the stage is growing, and I didn't realize that that was a pressing issue in the community. Mostly, the most comments I've heard is, "Please give us more grassy, loungy space within Town Park." And, um, so, yeah, reducing, eliminating the storage space below the bathroom facility creates a few less opportunities to need to drive your main instructs and trailers in there to pick up whatever you're using in that storage space below the facilities. And, uh, I think that the Parks Department should solve their long-term storage needs in a separate place and preserve as much of Town Park for Town Park Recreation as possible. That's what I wanted to say about this plan. Also, on my laptop, I wasn't able to view the tree planting schedule. I could see that certain trees are being protected and saved, but I couldn't actually see how many new trees are being planted, and I couldn't see what kind of trees are being planted. All the existing mature trees in the park are aging out on their natural lifespan and deserve to be replanted along the way that they were historically planted, restoring the orderly nature of that park that you can see still today, 'cause the trees are still there, but even more so in photographs. Thanks.
The area we're gonna put the building on, it's nothing but a big dugout with two walls.
Been there way for...
And it's gonna be something that they do, it's not a maintenance building, it's something they use to store the stuff that's used at the baseball fields, 'cause I've been there myself doing it and working in, over the years, so I know that's no big problem. Uh, and that's no problem whatsoever, and the bandstand, you had mentioned that the last time, both, for both things, so I got no problem with that. Again, that's it.
Yeah, I mean, I, from the days that I worked there, I mean, that, that's been used for storage of equipment, and regardless of their long-term plan, to have some type of equipment up there makes, makes perfect sense for, especially as you, as you go to this plan and putting new things in, why you wouldn't wanna have storage there, it makes no sense to me. So, certainly putting that in is perfectly...
And that's everything.
I'm gonna make it bigger.
You're actually eliminating what is currently used as a storage area to expand...
No one ever wanted to walk in that building.
Expand the, no, no, expand the bathroom area too, so...
Yeah, that's right.
That's just a...
That was all I was gonna say exactly.
I knew you were, but I know, I've been there, I've been there myself and worked out of it myself, so no problem there.
So, the, the two things that I, to Joe's point about making sure we're giving them direction moving forward, I think, are the eighth, making sure that the board collectively, or each of you, how you feel about the eight versus 10 foot, and then the walkways where the current basketball court is. Is there any other?
That's it for me, that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else has anything that's... I mean, yeah, as part of that walkway, obvious, well, if we're eliminating it down to eight feet, it's, it's less critical in terms of, of traffic control that's no longer needed, so...
So, can, can I ask for the opinion of the board for that space where, where Babe's doesn't...
For the basketball...
No, for, for that picnic area, for that walkway. We'd like to have a clear idea of, you know, what would, what we would do there if, if to change it. Otherwise, we can change it and then come back and do this whole...
Well, if it's not there, I won't complain about the design. He doesn't drive his trucks around.
Yeah, it's in there.
Planting it is...
Yes.
Oh, landscape planting on that way.
Yes.
The one that goes...
For driving.
Yeah, don't use them, 'cause if you didn't have them, you could narrow the one and eliminate the other...
I guess, yeah, to Babe's point, I mean, reducing the amount of asphalt is a great idea. I, I follow it, it wasn't something I thought of until he started talking about it, but it makes sense, right? It's, it's a Town Park, you know, just again...
Can I just suggest, suggest something once more? One more thing?
You're asking for their opinion as to what to do, so I'd let them finish.
Well, that's why I listened, but you just said something, and I think this might, maybe not. All these walkways here, whether we keep this or we just make it to this, all these walkways could be at less width, we just won't drive our trucks on those. So, then you're talking five feet as, as opposed to, you know, so we're, we're given options here, but we can continue. But that's, yeah, so then we wouldn't drive our trucks on that, it wouldn't be an issue for us.
I just, I just feel there's no need for it whatsoever, and that's...
Well, that's because of the asphalt being brought up, so I'm trying to eliminate the asphalt.
Let's let the board know you're...
You're taking away the basketball court, and you're eliminating asphalt, and you're putting asphalt back. It's, it, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. Again, and the basketball court's there, and there's a nice green spot all around. Now, you wanna eliminate it, that's, that's, that's what, again, that's hard.
Was there, was there an overriding, I mean, I, I, you know, I'm less worried about the asphalt, not asphalt, to tell you the God's honest truth, this is me. I'm more worried about what the thought process was to eliminate the basketball court, as to why it wouldn't be a good idea to keep a third basketball court at Town Park. What was, what was the, the thought process there? Because, again, I'm going back to what I originally said. I would just as soon keep the, keep the basketball court there, eliminate those walkways, and if you wanna put some picnic tables in other areas, that's all well and good. That's, that's what I would like to see, but I, you know, and I said, you guys need to make that decision, but, you know, I'm hearing various things here and...
I, I think, I think it was after some discussion from the Park Commission that we're not, we are, we're gaining a basketball court, number one. So, we're going from having one to having two.
Yep.
And then, in that area where we listened to, originally it was going to be used as parking, there was some, maybe using this parking though for safety concerns, for the bandstand, what have you. We listened to the people of the town, they came to our meetings, they were adamant that they did not want that to be a parking lot, which we understood and we listened to. And then after some discussion, we were like, well, you know, if we got, if we eliminated that and came with this design, that it was a nice walking path and a passive recreation area for people of the town. Now, whether you agree with that opinion or not, that was the, that's, that was our, that was our rationalization. So, I'm just asking, I'm asked, I'm answering the question that you asked.
That's fine. I mean, I, I don't see Town Park as a passive recreation area, I truly don't. I see it as an active recreation area, and to take out an active recreation facility, put in a small passive recreation there, when we have the bike paths, we have Plains Park, we have a lot of other areas where, where passive recreation, to a larger extent, can be done, just makes more sense to me to, to leave this as much as an active area as possible, and we're, you know, I understand, we, we have two basketball courts, I think, I'd rather, you know, especially when it's a, also, street hockey, I'd rather see three of those facilities up there than two at that point. I guess that's where I'm coming from, but at least I understand what your thought process was.
Go ahead.
Yeah, two quick things. I guess, one thing is, it's good, you know, we haven't gone in support of parks, you know, we've got this new Pearl Street court that's gonna be happening too, right? So, we are gonna add a nice state-of-the-art court. Well, it's non-functional, it's not usable. It's, that's, you'd never see anybody playing there. So, I'm saying, okay, we are adding a court, which is nice, in support of them. And then, just shifting gears quickly, the walkways in front of the new bathroom facility, or the renovated bathroom facility, I'm showing doorways from the front. I see walkways going to the side.
We need to renovate, we need to revise that.
Okay.
That just wasn't revised after we got the building planned.
Says end point for the next one.
Yeah, we're gonna be revising that.
The catch is, you have it.
Yep.
Okay.
So, they could include that in the revision to come back in two weeks.
I'm sure that was caught. Anyone else on the walkways up near the...
So, it sounds like a motion to me.
I believe we've talked it to death.
Well...
With, with that...
I, I...
Do we want to come back?
The only reason why I'm not doing it as a motion is I hate to, I mean, again, I don't think it's our job to design this, it's, it's the, it's the Park Commission's job to design this to a certain extent. If they're hell-bent that they wanna get rid of the basketball court, then so be it. I don't, I don't wanna make that motion. I, I, I don't, I don't see that as being where we wanna be.
You wanna take a straw poll on that?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I mean, no disrespect by this at all whatsoever. It's more of trying to get a handle on how this whole process works. We had a couple of present, we had a presentation at our last meeting. We did some adjustments, came back to the board. At the end of the meeting, at the, at the end of the last Planning Board meeting, the chairman had thanked us for coming before the board, making our presentation. We had some healthy discussions about what people wanted and what people didn't want. But there was a comment at the end of the meeting to like, to, to what the point he just, Mr. Caligione just made now, that said, "In the end, it's our decision, because it's, it's under the jurisdiction of the Park Department." So, I guess, I, I don't know, I don't know where we are right now.
That was the, that was the opinion of one member. It was the opinion of the chair at the time.
And it was also, it was also a preliminary, because nobody had bothered...
So, that's what I'm asking right now, so...
Because nobody had bothered to come to the board previously, when you were cooking up the designs...
Understood.
To get input from somebody who might actually know what they're talking about, to help with the design process.
Not that we didn't know what we were talking about, but I understand what you're saying.
No, but you got other people who do too.
But that's what I thought the preliminary was on.
That's what I'm saying.
So, I guess, I guess my, my question is, if it gets defeated, defeated here, then what do we do?
The last meeting, the last meeting was the first preliminary meeting that you guys bothered to do with the Planning Board, and they tried to give you as much input as possible ahead of making a formal application for a site plan. So, that was a preliminary meeting.
Understood.
Yeah, it was informal, so you got input from that, and you come back, and there's still things that are showing that they clearly didn't feel were heard or addressed, but you're, but you're in the actual review process now.
But in the design, not so much, I mean...
At all. All I'm saying is, now you've heard all this, my suggestion would be you ask for a continuance for two weeks to let your architect take a shot at addressing as many of the things that you guys feel you can do, that at least try to address.
We were gonna give more than that, Larry, but, I'm sorry, we, we've gotta give him more than that. I don't want him coming back in two weeks, 'cause we haven't, I mean, you know, I, I said, I, if they want, if they're hell-bent to come with this, I, I don't have a problem with it, that's their decision in the end. I don't think Babe feels that way, he certainly has the right to feel that way, but, but I think we need to, as a board, make, you know, it'll give them enough to say, "Hey, are you getting rid of the walking path, or you're not? Are you keeping the basketball court, or you're not?" 'Cause if we come back in two weeks and have the same argument, they can't go out to bid, and we're not gonna get this thing done.
No, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna hold it up, I'm just, that's my opinion, again, if you wanna take a straw, a straw poll of the board, I'd be more happy.
Well, itemize them then.
Yeah.
Eight-foot walkway.
Yeah, I don't think anybody, yeah, I don't think anybody has said...
So, that's just the one walkway, 'cause everything else was eight.
It's already eight.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the only thing, if you wanna connect with us, School Committee as a whole, so we can budget for that, I'm okay with that, but I can't...
Yeah, but that, yeah, that's down the road.
Yeah, yeah, they right now...
Well, I just wanna make that point.
That's done.
Yeah.
Then it's up to you guys.
Yeah, we won't have that involved.
That's it.
No deep foot.
You're not getting anything.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Then the, the extra sidewalks and picnic tables and picnic areas would be at least reduced.
I think the way to break it up is, are you willing to approve it without the basketball court?
Well, that was, yeah, okay.
As long as everybody is willing to approve it without the basketball court, I think that's, I think that's part one, and then part two, are you willing to approve it with any walkway in that area?
Reduced or not?
Reduced or not, just...
Picnic area.
Yes, whatever. You want, you want that?
Well, that whole, yeah, I think Babe's talking about anything in that whole area here, no walkway.
So, so, first, basketball.
Basketball court.
Go down the line.
Yeah, Joe? Yeah, I'm willing to approve it without her, again, that's, I think that's their decision.
Yeah.
Joe? That's a tough one. This whole thing's been controversial even from town meeting. I mean, it was, it was a closed vote.
I don't think, I don't, I don't think there was anything that ever said in town meeting or not to get rid of that basketball court or not.
Joe, give me a couple of minutes, yeah? I would vote no if the court goes.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. Ultimately, it's, it is Park's decision. One thing, on the plans, just make sure whatever markers for naming rights on that court be brought over to one of these new courts. I know that was one of the, one of the...
It will be rededicated at the basketball courts.
Statements that were, were made by the, by lots of town, town people. So, and I don't see that yet, that's why. So let's make sure that we have a location for whatever markers.
Yeah, that's us moving that, that wouldn't be them, so that would.
But it should be on the plans, right?
Yeah, we can do that.
So where the location is.
The picnic area.
So in regards to the picnic area, again, I'd like to see a reduction of those pathways as far as width wise, as much as we can. I'm okay with the picnic area, you know, as far as, you know, the usage for people to, yeah, to hang out, so I'm going to be okay with that.
Okay. For me, I vote no as far as the picnic area. Absolutely not. So that's a no vote for me, so.
I'm also a green space kind of guy, so I'd like to see the walks go.
Let's treat it all, so.
I don't have a tremendous objection, but I, but if some of the asphalt can be eliminated, I certainly would favor that.
For reducing.
But I don't think I'm at the point of a no vote.
So it's two, two right now?
Well, I'm on the fence on, on the asphalt quantities. I'm not sure.
Again, it comes down to what they want. If that's, if that's truly what they want to put in there, then I don't, I don't think, I don't know whether there's anything in our bylaw that says you can't put them in. So going to that, I.
What I'm hearing, and you guys correct me, is that three of you, at least two of you would be okay approving it as long as it's reduced to the maximum extent practical. Come back with less pavement and you won't deny it.
I'm in that camp.
And you're in that even if they.
Yeah, that, that works though.
So if we were going to do two weeks, it would be fine for that.
I think we have a, we have a.
These are minor changes.
Good understanding of where everybody is right now.
So if it's understood by, by the chair, if it would be fine to schedule that for two weeks, because I think that would be a minor adjustment for Mike to make, I think two weeks would be plenty for him. And that would be, you know, that's fine.
Hopefully it wouldn't take an hour and 15 minutes the next time.
We have one more. They have to vote.
The motion to, to extend this to the meeting, our next meeting in?
Five twenty-one.
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 Just move in second, move to continue until five twenty-one.
So who made the motion, Chris?
Yes, Joe did.
Joe made the motion, I said.
Any further discussion?
Oh, okay, sorry.
Aye.
Close, unanimous of five. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, yeah.
Pearl Street.
Not getting rid of us that easy today.
In the interest of time.
By half, for half time.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Boilings won though.
They did?
Yeah.
Big win.
I know, I was so excited. I was so nervous after that, Tights game seven.
Exactly.
I woke up my, well, it's only my voice, I woke up my whole house. She went to bed already.
Round two.
Okay, round two.
Oh.
Okay. Jeez. Many site plans. Pearl Street rec area.
Okay. Again, Mike Moonin from CHA Consulting representing the town of Milford for the Pearl Street Recreation Area.
How about town of Milford?
Milford would be good.
Pardon?
We're in Milford.
Did I say Milford?
You said Medford.
Oh, no, I thought I said Milford.
They're mostly the same.
Milford, yeah. It might've just been, yeah, Milford. I don't even work in Medford, so I don't know why. Milford. So in the interest of time, I think you guys are all familiar with this site. You brought this to them preliminarily also, right? So right now it's just a, an open asphalt area with two basketball courts right now and I think they're not usable right now. One, one is missing a hoop and so this plan replaces one of the basketball courts with this, this parking area with a picnic area at the end and some places for artwork. And then we're putting in a new basketball court, pretty much on the same footprint as the other basketball court. And we're providing a more defined access driveway to the parking lot and then we're also providing walkways around the perimeter of the parking lot and then one down to the sidewalk on Pearl Street. So, and there's no lighting proposed at this, at this site. There's no sports lighting for the basketball, so.
Well, we did talk about, we did talk about running.
Conduit.
Conduit. So if in the future we decided we did want to light it, we'd be able to do that.
Is that shown on the plan, Jim?
I'm not sure.
That's not on our plans yet.
Are the bollards added?
The two, the fire chief, you got that email about the fire chief asking for additional bollards?
Yes. I sent it. Jeez, I don't know if I got that.
So that's.
It's a minor change.
Yeah, it could be a contingency.
That's additional to the five that we have there, right? He wanted two extras on, on EGDs here, is that, if I understand it correctly?
Okay.
Probably three.
Three in each of those spaces? Okay. So three on each.
Jim, which spaces again?
So these spaces here.
At the end of the park.
One, two, three, one, two, three.
Oh, okay.
Have these five.
Eighteen.
Oh, and then there also, okay. Yeah, sure.
About it by three is six. You could, you could get away with two.
Get six-foot spacing, you're going to have a pretty small car to get through.
It's not even, it's not even the direction of travel.
Right, they're alongside the parking space.
Yeah.
That's why they need to be put there.
Yeah. Okay.
So we're saying two or three? So two on each side.
Two on each side.
Unless the fire, unless the fire chief said.
He might've said one.
He just said add some.
Yeah, add some? He just said add some.
There was one question that we had, my recollection, and I don't know if you guys took a look at it, was the, when this property was given to the town, as to whether use of parking was acceptable based on the fact that the Edwards family gave this to the town and I don't know if there was any stipulations that it had to be used for recreation or not or whatever, but I know.
I did follow up with, I follow up, looked at the DED, followed up on everything. It was actually not given. It was made for.
Okay.
And there were no stipulations in the D, there were no, there was nothing that had to find anywhere. I just, I did ask to, heard you guys to look at putting some sort of stormwater.
We had talked about that Winter Street section.
That was, yeah. I was, so it's a, it's the existing, it's an existing paved area, so they're not increasing the paved area so that there's no requirement for stormwater. But what I had said is the preliminary hearing was just that, I think anytime we're making improvements, we should try to improve upon our stormwater. There is a slight reduction in the pavement, I guess, so sure, that's an improvement, but I certainly would like to have seen something additional for the paved area to get treated in some way prior to the, prior to discharge to that catch basin that's already there.
You have the lawn.
Again, not a requirement.
Really good idea.
Not a requirement, but it, and what Jim is bringing up about the Winter Street side, which is, so this, this area came up in another, I should have that on. This air, this part up in a stormwater meeting that I was having as a possible area to make, they, the stormwater people had no idea that this improvement was going to be going on and they identified it as someplace for us to potentially do some stormwater mitigation. What Jim had mentioned was there's that area in the slope on the Winter Street side, maybe we could take that space and use that for stormwater. So I, it's, that's a kind of a good trade-off, I guess, is just to say, well, will you, you know, that we can use, stormwater can use that area and, and we're not going to make the improvement to the, the existing discharge to that catch basin, but like I said, it meets requirements as is, but I just wanted to, that was something I brought up.
So that would be, because we're not doing anything on that Winter Street side.
Yeah.
That's the hill that goes down that used to lead to the school.
And I think what you have budget for is what we're showing.
Right.
I think that there would.
So we didn't budget for stormwater.
Money added to the budget from some other funds to.
But we would consider doing it in the future on that, that spot.
We found that out.
Anybody else have a vote?
No. I'm sorry, I, I think, the topic Elizabeth is on is really important.
I mean, the federal requirements and the mandates are difficult for communities to meet. You would understand it a thousand times better than I do. But you're talking about reserving an area on the Winter Street side?
They wouldn't, they wouldn't really even have to reserve it because it's already, they're, they're already not using it.
Okay. And that would allow the town to implement stormwater management improvements for this site?
For, it wouldn't really, so it wouldn't be for the site, it would be for this.
The catch basin.
Catchment area, the larger catchment area.
I knew there was a catch in there.
And so while this meets, so the requirement for stormwater when you're redoing a site is to meet the stormwater standards to the maximum extent practical. Now what that, so that's a requirement for any site. You're redoing the site, maximum extent practical. Now there's a clear wide interpretation of that. Maximum extent practical can be, I've reduced the pavement area.
That's true.
Maximum extent practical could be, I added a small little drainage swale so that it's treating the water for TSS before it gets to that catch basin. There's lots of, I'm, I'm not asking for an underground basin despite what everybody seems to think every time I say stormwater.
It's only just every other project, but yeah, go ahead.
But, but that's where, as we, as we make improvements, as we rework pavement, we should be, my view of maximum extent practical is different on this side of the table than it was on the other side of the table. When I was on the other side of the table, that I would jump up and down saying, I'm reducing the pavement I'm meeting. But that's not my, that's not my battle anymore. My battle is the other side and I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for a little bit more treatment for the existing pavement before it gets to that catch basin. I'm not asking for a lot, I'm asking for something.
And I'm with her.
Now, we've already done this at Town Park, so if you're not aware, Martha, we, we've done this at Town Park, so we have filtration tanks and everything. We did this prior to the.
And then you want to put a bunch of asphalt in to eliminate what you just did.
Good one, babe.
Just say, "Touche, babe."
Touche.
Makes sense. It is mitigated.
The swale that Elizabeth mentions, that does not seem like a lot to ask at all.
Well, where's the drainage go here?
It goes down to the.
There's a catch basin.
Bottom corner here.
There's an existing catch basin off the side of.
Do you believe it's right here?
Yeah.
Right here.
How would the water?
Yeah, where, where, yeah, where can you get a swale in there?
Yeah. I want you to, I want you to grade the parking lot that you're regrading to go over to the corner, not there.
No, here.
Down here. So to the catch.
I want you to grade the parking lot to go down here and then have a swale in between there and the.
And go to that catch. We can actually do that for, that would be pretty easy to do. Add a grass area and swale.
I apologize.
But that would be satisf, that would be satisfactory and then that would still leave the Winter Street as an option at another time.
Exactly.
And that, that would be left grass area, so you could go in there and excavate and add chambers.
So we can add that to the.
Yeah, we can do whatever over time later.
Yep.
Sounds like a plan.
I would go with the plan.
So we, we can keep on the same schedule with this one. We're not, we, we don't need to expedite this one just to, we could make that change and come back with the other plan.
Yeah, but we don't want you to come back if you don't need to.
Okay.
Can we?
Unless you make a.
Well, they're going to have to anyways.
Can we approve it?
Just one quick thing, the ADA parking, obviously it's just, the ADA parking is just for the basketball court. We're not doing anything for the youth center across the street.
You can't get there for years.
That's why I want to make sure, right? And, and the youth center's okay.
Parking wise.
They're two separate sites.
They have, yeah, they have two.
Along the side.
Yeah, they have their own, they have their own.
The parking lot is for the basketball.
Basketball court.
It's only for the basketball.
It'll also be used at Town Hall.
It's only for the basketball.
Well, it's correct.
It's going to be used for the Town Hall, then it's against its only bylaw.
It is only used for the basketball court.
Thank you, that's why, that's, yeah. You're welcome.
Well, in the picnic area.
In the picnic area.
In the picnic area.
That's why I was asking why.
There's nothing outside of the site.
Yeah.
Mr. Wheelock, you have words to say?
Hi there, guys. Jamie Wheelock. For the folks who were standing up very, very strong and vigorously for the standalone baseball, basketball court at Town Park, it should be understood that this standalone basketball court will become the new default, seven days a week standalone basketball court and it needs to have lighting installed as soon as possible, not in the distant future, okay? We have a parks department in Milford. We need to turn it into a named Parks and Recreation Department. We need the commissioners to focus on recreation and parks, which isn't built into their name as it currently stands, although the Parks Director has added it to his title.
Administrator.
Yes, the Parks Administrator has added recreation to his title, but for some reason, we are choosing to not light, we are not addressing the next 40 years of use of this lot to mimic the 40-ish years of the standalone in Town Park that has had working lights on it and has been being used every night till the lights go off all year long. So let's develop this new park plan on Pearl Street to include lighting for Milford residents so that people can play basketball after four o'clock from September until March. Also, you guys, the board, planning board spoke about electric car charging infrastructure included in the plans and I don't see that here. Also, the grassy slope on the Winter Street side is being preserved for simple like economic reasons, instead of actually plateauing it off, leveling the lot, moving the basketball court towards Winter Street, creating a grass buffer, a level grass buffer on both sides of the basketball court. That would be a great place to have more grass and more space to enjoy the basketball from outside of the courts. And I think that this decision is being made purely for financial reasons and I guess that is an economic reality that we don't have infinite resources, but considering that we could do something that's going to be excellent for 40 or 50 more years, instead of just warmed over rehashing the existing thing. Also, I hope the town will push back against the convenience store owner who's encroaching on the town lot there and make him go back to where he used to be, they used to be only a few years ago. It was really disheartening to hear anybody in this room speak about those courts not being very usable. The reason they're not usable is because they were not maintained properly by the Parks Department by choice and that created this idea that, oh, we should use it for something else. In fact, those courts, those single hoops get used all the time still because people want to play a no-cost, low-cost, easy, fun thing. So if you guys wanted to push back on the lighting and insist that lighting be more strongly concerned, included the lighting, that would be great. It would be a huge mistake to not include lighting on this sports court right away. Thank you.
Gave my comments for the board?
I don't have anything else. I mean, I think we need to, we need to continue it just to make sure that we, you know, that grading can in fact fit or whatever and I would assume these are going out as the same, same bid, so.
Well.
Two, two separate bids.
They're going to be two separate, but there'll be that option to sort of piggyback.
I would, I would, I would just, I would just like to continue this until the next meeting as well, just to, my only comment is to show that grading on there. I don't know if anyone else has, my motion is to continue until the next meeting and.
So, it's the grading and the bollards right now, right?
The grading means stormwater management, right?
Show the code in the plan. Yes.
So, any future lighting under one on the...
Oh, yeah, the conduit. Yep, sorry. I just drew a blank.
Then get a grant next year for the lighting.
We'll be burnt out. Motion to continue to the next meeting.
Second.
Moved in second, and then we continue the site plan meeting until 21st, 5:21. Any discussion? All those in favor? Close, and then we'll survive.
You good? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Joe, I didn't realize that was you when you walked in. It's nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
There we go.
Have a good night.
Want me to read my report, Babe?
What's that?
Want me to read my report on the last one?
Oh, yeah, okay. The ZBA special permit for Pearl for 50 Congress Street.
And this is Arlen Johnson's old house. The applicant requests a special permit to allow for a change from one nonconforming use to another on the subject property.
I thought Joe was the new Mike Frashon. I'm sorry. Sorry. Pardon me.
The existing house is a nonconforming three-family dwelling. Gentlemen, want to leave? Go. Jesus. The existing house is a nonconforming three-family dwelling with a professional office on the first floor. Specifically, the proposal is to convert the first-floor office to a two-bedroom apartment. The existing first-floor apartment is a one-bedroom unit with a living room, kitchen, and bath. The existing second-floor arrangement contains one one-bedroom unit with a living room, kitchen, and bath, and a one... and one two-bedroom unit with a living room, kitchen, and bath. The three existing apartments will remain unchanged. The off-street parking area off West Spooth Street can accommodate eight parking spaces, thus complying with the ratio of two spaces per apartment. The faded parking lot striping does need to be refreshed. Recommend favorable report to ZBA, subject to the parking lot being restripped. Behind the...
Comments from the board?
It's going anyway, so...
The thing is, we're not changing it. We're just shuffling around.
Is it a motion to approve?
Motion's not favorable.
Favor... right. Excuse me. Favorable recommendation? Motion four?
I will second that motion.
Moved in second, and we send a favorable recommendation?
With Larry's letter. With Larry's letter.
With Larry's letter. Any discussion? Are we now all in favor? Close, and then we'll survive. Only thing we have to do right now is sign the...
Sign that, just plan.
Sign the mylar.